All right, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No need for a roll call. Everybody's here tonight. Old business, the regular meeting minutes of January fourth, 2024 were provided for review. So I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January fourth, 2024 as presented. Have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? And I only see staff out there, so probably not. All right, new business, election of council president. For ordinance number 1038, the governing body shall elect one of its own bodies as the president of the council at the second meeting in January. The president of the council shall preside at all meetings of the council in the absence of the mayor. So I need a motion, I guess, to nominate somebody. A motion to nominate someone as the president?
Mayor, I would like to recommend Councilman Kirby, please.
Have a second?
My second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Don Studnica as president of the council.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion to second. Any other nominations?
Here, I'd like to nominate Mr. Clemmons.
Okay. Anybody second that?
I'll second.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, Carrie, thank you, but I'm gonna withdraw.
Okay. So we are down to Councilmen Clemmons and Studnica. So I need someone to make a motion to appoint council member, one of them two, as president of the council.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Studnica
Second.
As council president.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Don Studnica, council member, as the president of the council. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Congratulations, Don Studnica.
Pay raise with that, right?
Yes. Check is in the mail as we speak. Okay, thank you. Item number three is equipment replacement request, non-portable, non-potable water pumps. The treatment facility creates non-potable water from the treatment process and uses that water throughout the facility, most notably for operations of the belt filter press. On a typical day, nearly 30,000 gallons of effluent are recycled and used. In December, the second of three pumps broke down, leaving only one pump in operation. So staff solicited bids for bids for a replacement pump from our supplier network, and two bids were received. CMB equipment for $24,036 and Cogent fluid equipment, $29,383.29. Staff recommends purchasing from Cogent as they, their bid, they bid stainless steel pump housings and impellers versus mild steel. And I'm sure Tony can explain that when he comes up here. Funds for this purchase in the utility-based acquisition account, 50-05-43301. So I need a motion to accept the bid from Cogent Fluid Equipment in the amount of $30,853.
So maybe-
It's a base bid plus the 5% contingency of $1,470. I have a motion?
In a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I've looked into it, stainless steel, that's, you're going that way because it's more durable for continuous use than the mild steel is?
Correct.
They actually researched this, and it lasts a lot longer.
It absolutely does. Our last pumps made it about 12 and a half years, and they were mild steel. Obviously, you can see the price difference, but we should get a lot more longevity out of these versus the ones that are in there currently.
You've been operating with one pump short here for how long?
Couple of months.
Couple of months is all?
Yeah. We're trying to make it to 2024, so we can put this before everybody.
Yeah.
And it's, it's difficult to find field service techs to just come out and work on a single small pump. And trying to, access is really a big issue for these because it's down within a confined space with no means or methods to get to it. It's really kind of a bugger.
Tony, my, my concern, my question, if you could educate me, so we were down two pumps, and I was like, well, what if that third one goes out?
We, we have provisions to provide potable water to our belt filter press operations as a backup, so we would not be, you know, without service. However, we would be paying a very hefty fee from the water department to do so.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
I was gonna ask, you're buying three of the new pumps, right?
Correct, all three.
All three.
Okay, so are you gonna install all three at once, or are you just gonna install two and keep one as reserve?
It's kind of like batteries, you know, they only run as, it's better to replace all three. We'll keep the old one that we take out as a spare. But it's just because of the way our system tracks runtime hours and all the rest of those things, it's just a lot easier to have everything up and running because of the efficiencies. You know, the newer pumps will put out a higher flow rate. The old pump, you know, because it's worn down, it will not be able to provide the same flow, so it causes a lot of throttling, and it causes some issues with, you know, evening things out.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this one? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is the floodplain management annual report.
Well, gentlemen, um-
Mike is gonna give us a briefing on that?
Just to kind of bring everybody up to speed, the city of Lansing participates in what's called the community rating system through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and that gets us a discount on our flood insurance for anyone who happens to get it through the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. So just to kind of show you where, where we're at, Lansing is, is one of, only a few communities that has a rating of seven, and how it works is the lower the number, the more discounts you get. So for instance, most counties and most communities don't participate in this program, but this is something that was put into place many years ago. We've got floodplain ordinances and stuff that do that. So just to kind of give you an example, there's only two communities in Kansas, Manhattan and City of Shawnee, that, that have a, a more, a greater discount, and we're, we're doing really well because there's quite a few communities that don't even participate in this. But as such, I'm giving a report to meet our annual requirements because we have to report everything to the FEMA. Next slide, I guess, because it's not.
It flashed.
Just push the page down, there we go. Uh, just some statistics, we've got 149 structures in the special flood hazard area. That's actually what they call the floodplain. Uh, the floodplain shown here on the map. The majority of those are actually in the Rock Creek subdivision, and then there's a trailer park that has, that's also in, in the floodplain. So we haven't had any acreage, we've got about 2,000 acres that is currently floodplain. As you can see, though, the city limits extends all the way to the Missouri River, and most of that acreage is just a big giant swath of floodplain in the Missouri River Valley. We don't have any current ongoing flood projects, and these three parcels were in the, they, they intersect the floodplain, but none of the structures that were built on these three parcels are in the floodplain. So that's a good thing. For us, this is the first year we've had that in a while, and a lot of that's because we're, we're getting better at managing the floodplain. So this is just some of the things that, that are happening right now. Every five years, the county and the regional counties wind up, Leavenworth and Johnson, update their hazardous mitigation plan. The hazardous mitigation plan has a portion of that that is, controls our floodplain, and it's part of it, and this is a big old thick document. If you want to read it, it's there, but they're doing their update this year, and we participate in that typically. Captain or Lieutenant Dickerson is the representative. Uh, we do CRS reporting, which is kind of what we're doing now. We, we report all these things to FEMA, Community Outreach. A lot of times you'll see those flood articles in the connection. Those are part of our community outreach. We've got great GIS out there, so you can go on and you can look and see if you're in the floodplain. We put out articles every year to kind of tell people what the floodplain looks like, what it does, and we've got a lot of documents, including in the library. We've got flood information that's available for the public so they can get any of that information, and we get points for all this outreach, and that helps us with our CRS rating. Uh, we also have some regulations in the UDO as well as, because our zero net runoff policy helps with this, our floodplain permit restrictions, as well as our ordinances we have shown there in our technical specifications. So it's kind of a lot of things that work to give us this rating, and, and like I said, we're, we're, we're doing pretty good with the seven. You know, like I said, there's only two communities that have got a six, and it's, they're pretty big steps. And it's from what research I did today, there are only four communities, I think, in the United States that actually have achieved a one, which is the highest, and one's in California, two are in Washington, and I think Tulsa, Oklahoma recently just achieved a one, which is, it's, it's a great discount, but boy, it takes a lot to get there. A lot of staff time and a lot of other kind of stuff, so. Uh, with that, I'll answer any questions anyone might have.
People that live in the floodplain, they get notified that they are actually in the floodplain.
Oh, yeah. Everyone that's in the floodplain is required to file a, an EC elevation certificate, and we have those on file in our office, and that's-
I just remember at the cemetery getting something every year, saying, hey, you're in the floodplain. If you buy a house, they have to recognize or let you know that you're in a floodplain too?
Yes, that, yes, that's, that's, they're, they're supposed to. Uh, and then anytime we do new plaques, we put building permit restrictions so you cannot build in the floodplain. This is all part of the system that was put into place, probably 15 or so years ago. Yep.
You can't even change the elevation of the floodplain, can you? You can't like put dirt or rock or anything in it, right?
Well, you, you have to build a certain amount above the floodplain, correct?
Yes.
Three foot.
If, if you look in our GIS, it, it puts what's called the base flood elevation, and you have to be at least one foot above base flood elevation, and you are right, you're not supposed to put anything in the floodplain without a permit, and that's actually handled through the state. There was a guy out on McIntyre that went to the trouble, the house, uh, there on McIntyre just east of 147th Street, he added to his barn. He went and got a floodplain fill permit through the state of Kansas, so he was able to do that. And we're currently working with one person out on Willow that is trying to get what's called a letter of map amendment, because they feel that they're not, but that's a pretty long and complicated process. Again, remember, these maps are, are generated, and, you know, sometimes there are some local conditions that might show something a little bit different. We had the same thing with Harbor Freight. Harbor Freight, the map shows a big swath of floodplain, but what really happens is the floodplain is in that giant culvert that was put under that property-
Built in.
-before they, so the, so, you know, sometimes you do have to use some local engineering and, and judgment to make additions or modifications of the map.
Do we have any city property in a floodplain?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's some, like City Park is, is a real good example. Treatment Plant.
Is the pool considered-
Oh, no.
It's outside?
It's way up out of the, now, the floodplain's adjacent to it, but the pool itself, the structure itself is outside, and maybe a little bit of parking- I was gonna say, at one point, maybe just the very corner of the parking lot was in floodplain, but I think they even changed that. But I know when we looked at it, a parking lot could have been in the floodplain. That wouldn't have been- It's habitable structures that are the, the real, the real, the real thing. You know, you just don't want to put that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thanks, Mike. Item number five is Resolution Number B1 2024, Resolution of the City of Lansing, Kansas, authorizing improvements to the sewer system of the city and providing for the payment of the cost thereof. Bond Council Gilmore and Bell has prepared Resolution B1 2024 that authorizes improvements to the sewer system for Town Center project. The total cost of the project is estimated to be $1.1 million. I need a motion to adopt Resolution Number B1 2024, Resolution of the City of Lansing, authorizing improvements to the sewer system of the city and providing for the payment and costs thereof.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Well, these, these are improvements, right? So I guess I, I see the word improvements, and I think we're spending a million dollars on improvements? Did we not do it right the first time?
Now, this is the old sewer-
The old one?
-that you got the smell for quite a while.
Okay.
It would, yes, it would replace that. More specifically, this sewer extends Town Center Sewer to the north. When Town Center was originally envisioned, founding fathers didn't know how far north that they were gonna take that project. So sewers north of there were not improved, and as we see development, you know, coming to Town Center, this is kind of that piece that's going to allow for that to connect, and it'll also remove about 1,200 feet of pipe that have been problematic over the years.
So will anything in Town Center be replaced, or is it all north of Town Center?
It is. It's kind of hard to see, but everything, the project will start at K Street-
Okay.
And it will go north to Kansas, and then just, just beyond to Seven Mile Creek. So nothing within Town Center proper. All that sewer's already there, and it's already sized appropriately. It's just, it's connecting Town Center to the new pipe network that wasn't done back when Town Center was created.
On this map, it shows that certain lines are being abandoned. Are those just staying there in the ground, or are we going to replace that?
Typical, well, tho, those lines will, will go away, they will cease to exist. The five homes that are connected to that line, they'll get rerouted into the new sewer that's going in. Typical abandonment procedures involve digging the manholes down three feet below grade, punching a hole in the bottom, then filling them full of rock, and then covering them with dirt. At the same time, they'll disconnect the pipes at both manhole locations and will fill them full of either sand or flammable fill- -so that they just become basically inert. That way, if they ever got hit in the future, you know, contractor can easily look and say, oh, this pipe's been abandoned. You know, there's, there's nothing in it.
Thank you.
This will fix that smell? Is that the issue?
That's been eliminated, but yes, this, this was a contributing factor.
This will replace that old pipe though?
Correct. Where we had the line break.
All right, any more discussion on this one? All right, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Item number six is Resolution B2, B-2 2024, A Resolution Authorizing the Offering for Sale of General Bonds of the City of Lansing, Kansas. The Bond Council Gilmore and Bell has prepared the Resolution B2 2024, authorizing the offering of sale of general obligation bonds. These bonds will fund the McIntyre Sewer Project, the Town Center Sewer Project, and the Aquatic Center Project. So I need a motion to adopt Resolution Number B2 2024, A Resolution Authorizing the Off, the Offering for Sale of General Obligation Bonds of the City of Lansing, Kansas.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
And we actually have Bond Council on a Zoom link, Shelby Esposito, so if we have questions, she can answer them for us.
I mean, basically, we just took all three projects and put them together into one bond.
And I know you saved money there, is there any chance of, you've got A, B, and C under one, one bond? If something happens to B, are you gonna end up taking money from A to satisfy that, or would, is that possible?
I know on the pool one, I definitely don't believe we can shift money around on the pool.
They're specific to the projects, yeah.
And we're able to bring in the Town Center because the McIntyre project came in less than what we were expecting?
Yes, it came in significantly less, and so normally, we would have just reduced the amount of bond issuance that we needed for that. However, with this other project that kind of came in as kind of something we wanted to handle right away, if we were able to add that in, that Town Center project. And then, just for clarification, the issuance for the sewer improvements, that is, it's a, I think it was, we referred to it as temp notes, it's actually, it is general obligation bonds, but it's only about a four and a half year issuance. At the time, we were thinking temp notes, we might get a better interest rate, and the way interest rates are right now, it just wasn't, it didn't save us any money. So it's, it's actually a bond issuance, but it's just paid off in a shorter amount of time. Due to the debt that we had dropping off from the sewer plant, we were able to just carry that same amount of bond payment in the wastewater fund to fund these and, and pay them off in a quicker amount of time.
How much money are we talking about here? How much to bond?
To bond. For the, the project for Town Center was 1.1 million-
1 million?
And then McIntyre is 1.3, so about 2.4 million.
The, the wastewater plant that's dropping off, that's 900,000 a year, I believe, so that frees up a lot of money once that's off the books.
Amen.
Did the 1.3 on McIntyre, is that over and above the grant that we got?
Yes.
That's our-
So that is, we are getting a base grant of 1.3 million, and then we were planning to use reserves out of wastewater funds, and then this is the additional amount that's needed to fund that project, so.
And we got almost a quarter of a million from Leavenworth.
Leavenworth County gave us 240,000 for design.
Right, for design.
So that's already been received and spent, because that was just for design, yeah.
Yeah, this is construction, so.
Any other discussion on this one? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven is Executive Session, Economic Development. Need a motion to go into Executive Session for the preliminary discussion of economic development activities, KSA 75-4319B4, for 20 minutes, beginning at 7:22 and ending at 7:42. 7:43, I'm sorry. 7:23 to 7:43.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes. And if we can stay in here, we might pull up some exhibits as well.
For everybody else out?
Got to turn back on.
I got the thumbs up back here.
You guys have the thumbs up.
Go ahead.
I think a motion would return open session.
Take it.
I have a motion and a second to return open session. No binding action was taken during the executive session. Call and roll.
Mr. Studnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
All right, we have returned open session. Reports, anything from the department heads? Tony has something.
I was just gonna give you a rule 30, 30-second update on the McIntyre project, but-
Sure.
Tree clearings still ongoing. It's been kind of hampered here the last few days with the weather. Some of the pipe has arrived, some of the pipe's been held up because of supply chain issues with the gaskets. Manhole structures should go into production later this month, and we anticipate seeing those the second week of February, so we will probably start laying pipe before Valentine's Day. So that's, the bore pit will be getting constructed here in the next couple of weeks as weather permits, and blasting will resume again as weather permits, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Any other directors? Okay. City Attorney?
Another report, Mayor.
Uh, City Engineer? I just had to say that. Tim, what do you got?
Um, we communicated with the superintendent about the fireworks event, so we're going to be on the school board agenda on February 12th to, to ask the school board about that. And also, even if there is concern about that, or it doesn't work out on the school property, that still gives us four months to kind of plan for it at Bernard Park as a fallback option. Uh, but we are going to be at that meeting on February 12th. March 2nd, keep that on your calendars, that's the strategic planning meeting for the city council and department heads. We're finalizing the time right now, but we think it'll be five hours or thereabouts. So March 2nd, keep that open. One of the things I put in my report, the people purchasing the property for the apartment complex, they're still hoping to have that property purchased by January 31st, but they said there is a slight chance it could be that first full week of February. The contract would, goes until January 31st, so they did say if it looks like there's going to be a delay, they would let us know early next week. So if that's the case, if you guys wanted, we could do 15-minute special meeting in front of the work session, that would just extend the closing date a week and a half or something like that, if you guys are okay with that. But again, it's, it's also possible it'll close on January 31st, they don't know yet. And they were saying the delay, they, they always try to do closing on the tax credits and closing on the property pretty close to the same time, and so I guess if the tax credits get delayed, then the land gets delayed, so. So I'll keep you guys posted on that, but, but just understand, there is maybe a slight chance there would be 10 or 15-minute meeting, but also, I think we already extended that contract once, and it was like a one-page document, so it'd be a pretty simple thing. So keep your eyes open for that. Um, the LCDC annual meeting is tomorrow at the Riverfront Center. I know a few of you guys have RSVP'd yes for that, so please try to be there around 11:30 tomorrow. I think the speaker is from the American Royal, so it should be pretty interesting. The Chamber of Commerce banquet, that is the evening of Friday, February 16th, so if any of you guys want to go to the annual Chamber of Commerce banquet, let me know, and we can purchase a couple tables if you guys want, so just please let me know if that's something you have interest in. One bit of, I don't know if you'd call it bad news or challenging news, we did get our updated property and auto insurance rate the other day, and as far as claims goes, we really had very few claims, but, you know, when the cost of construction kind of explodes, that means the cost of replacing buildings also goes up on your insurance policy. So unfortunately, our insurance policy went up, I think about $24,000. So we, we would still be with Travelers, but there were also several insurance companies that wouldn't even provide a bid. As you guys know, I think the, the insurance industry right now is kind of challenging with a lot of weather events and things like that, so.
Bet we're not in Florida.
What's that?
I said, we're glad we're not in Florida. Really blowing up down there.
That was one of the examples that we heard that State Farm, one of the biggest insurance providers. Yeah. And it's, since we're with a company like Travelers that's nationwide, you know, catastrophic events like in Florida or California, that can kind of impact us too. So. And again, the, the biggest explanation that we got though was when the cost of construction materials and construction skyrockets, you know, or the cost of replacing it with your insurance goes up too. So that was kind of the big reason it went up. So a little bit of bad news, but, um, I did want to let you guys know that. So again, Travelers is our insurance provider. Uh, any other questions or comments? That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Let's go to the council. Don.
A big thank you and kudos to our people that cleared the streets and treated the streets and whatever. I got a couple of phone calls, uh, complimenting how quick we got out there. And again, how always are good, how good our roads look compared to the other communities right next to us. Also, I'd like to thank the council for having faith in me to be your president for the next year. So that's all I got, Mayor.
Thanks, Kevin.
Tony, Mike and Beth, thank you for coming in tonight. And Terry, nice to see you. And last night Greg and Josh, thank you for answering my questions and getting me squared away. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks. Gene?
Yeah, I'm going to chime in on the roads. And I know it's just not street department. It's a street park. And I know, Tony, if you guys even push snow?
We can play.
Okay. Well, anyway, it's, it's a, it's a big group effort and they do a great job. If you could just figure out a way to do it without disturbing my dog. Cause when he hears you at two blocks away, until you're two blocks gone. So. Uh, but great job again, as usual. No surprise. And I would like to, uh, congratulate Kerry for being elected as the vice president of the school board. Congratulations. And that's all I have.
All right. Marcus?
Hey, congrats, Don. I appreciate you taking that role for us, being our president. And, uh, thank you Kerry for serving in that position over the last year. So. Uh, and just echo in the street crews, it's a great job on the street crews, first responders, our police and fire out there as well. Go Chiefs, right? Go Chiefs this weekend. Um, and then, uh, and then the last thing I got is, um, the budget. Thank you so much on the budget and the hard work you're doing on the budget. I appreciate it. Great job on the library too. Good to see everybody here. I know it's snowing. I know it's bad weather, but we're all still here and appreciate the large audience we have tonight, Mayor. That's all I got.
All right. Thanks. Before I go to Jesse, I'd like to thank Kerry for being el presidente for the last year. I know you covered down on me a couple of times. So I really appreciate that and look forward to dishing some stuff off on you, Don. Jesse?
Yeah. Ditto to everything's been said. Uh, you know, the snow removal crews that are all there, the whole city that's working on snow removal, it's, it's a hard job. Anybody who's done snow removal knows it's, it's not an hourly job. You stay out there till it's done. You get a cup, a cup of coffee and you keep moving until it's clean. And we really appreciate all the hard work that they do out there. So.
In fact, a lot of it's done at night, which just makes it harder.
Right. Yeah. You can't see what you're doing and, and your family's at home in a nice warm bed and you're out there freezing to death. So yeah, it's, it's a tough job. So. But thank you all the directors for their reports tonight. We appreciate all your hard work that you're doing to improve our city. So. And thank you, Don, for serving as president for the next year. That's all I've got.
Echo, thank you, Don, for stepping in, taking over the responsibility of president. And, uh, again, thank you for the road crews, for all they do. I would like to mention some of our community citizens. Uh, uh, when I walked around my neighborhood in the frigid temperatures, there were neighbors out helping neighbors, whether it be just scraping their driveway or doing a sidewalk. We worked together as a team and, uh, it just kind of warmed my heart to see the kids out there helping elderly neighbors and just neighbors helping neighbors. So, uh, Lansing, we, uh, we have a lot of people looking at us and, uh, thank you for doing the right thing, even when no one's looking. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Pete. Dan?
Echo what everyone else said, Don. Appreciate you taking that on. And congratulations on your election. We did have an LCPA meeting this week. I sent the packet out to all of you. If you hadn't looked in it yet, uh, if you have any questions, please let me know. We did talk.
When did you send it?
I didn't get it that Don. Do you? You got the right email?
Oh, okay.
I don't think I got that.
Yeah, you got any email?
Oh, today?
So, uh, we did talk to Lisa at the LCDC about getting with each of the towns, uh, that are member of the port authority. Cause there's only two in Kansas. We're one of them. And, uh, asked her to get ahold of Tim to come to for the city and, uh, brief all the council together on what the port authority's doing. So, uh, looked for that request of, of getting it done. The KDOT study that we went up north on, uh, they haven't released it yet. They're expecting it to be released at the end of this month or the first week, the full week of February. And that's everything I have.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Kerry?
Ditto on what everybody said about the street crew, phenomenal job. Congratulations, Mr. Stednica. And with that, I move for adjournment. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call and roll.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
We are adjourned.